Frizzalone. Ogala. Summers. Cook. Rice. Tyson. Harris. Trainier. Fritz. Mueller. Gould. Van Dyne. Ballage. Brooks. Parker. Ventura. Dollinger. Markham. Berkowitz. Cowan. Tumanello. Weigel. Krelitis. And Winfrey.
Bill, we have a number of guests with us to help us understand what's included in the bill. We want to start out by saying thank you to all of our legislators and to county staff who helped to feed the information into them so that they could get what we needed in the bill. Will County has come out on top big time in this bill, so we are especially thankful for that. And we're thankful to have with us our lobbyists today, Julie Currie and Brett Hassert. Sorry. I'm mixing it with Hastert, and I didn't want to say that. And also Anne Schneider with us this morning to talk about the capital bill so that we can understand what things are in there for Will County. So, I'm going to let you all decide how you're going to begin the start. So, we have Julie standing up, so she's going to be first at the podium. And Brent with her.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Julie Currie, and Brent Hassert and I are your state lobbyists in Springfield. We've kind of divided this up into like three different parts. I'll start out with just going through a couple of bills that are somewhat related to the capital program, but more importantly, they're items that are of importance to Will County that deal with revenue that we thought you needed to know about. Brent is going to talk more about the vertical construction part of the capital bill, and then we'll turn it over to Anne Schneider to do the horizontal part, which is the transportation component of the state capital bill. So, you're going to have to bear with me because I'm not used to the clicker and... So, the first bill we wanted to talk about was an initiative of Will County, Senate Bill 527, sponsored by Senator Toy Hutchinson, Representative Larry Walsh Jr., and Representative McDermott. Big helpers on this issue. It deals with the land that the state has purchased for the South Suburban Airport. And as you know, back in 2002, the state of Illinois, through the state legislature, I think probably Debbie Halverson was our state senator at the time, passed legislation that reimbursed, to some degree, taxing bodies in Will County that had property within the footprint of the airport. So, the state has purchased, you know, thousands of acres of land at this point. And the problem is, back in 2002, of course, I think probably in 2002, people thought that the airport would maybe be built by today, but it's not. And at that time, they decided that they would reimburse taxing bodies for land that the state leased. So, if they leased farmland, or if they leased a residential home that they had purchased, those properties were properties that we could be reimbursed for, for tax revenue. But it was based on 2002 values, property values. So, we're, you know, move forward to 2019, we're getting reimbursed on property values based on what they were valued at in 2002. A lot of things have changed since then. The state purchased an airstrip bolt field, and, you know, that significantly increased the value of that land. So, this bill does a couple of things. The most important thing is it extends the sunset date by 10 years. And the bill then changes and gives the county assessor the authority to certify the value of that iDOT leased property in the South Suburban Airport footprint to current values. So, that's a big deal. So, the amount of revenue that we currently get from the state is around, I think, $190,000 a year. We estimate, and I think, you know, Rhonda and her staff will be doing the work over the next year, we estimate that that amount will double. That's significant for the small fire protection districts, library districts, school districts in that area. So, at current time, the bill awaits the governor's signature. This was an agreed bill. We negotiated it with the Illinois Department of Transportation and the legislative leaders. So, I, you know, I don't see any issue in terms of getting this signed by the governor within the next few weeks. The next bill is a bit more comprehensive. As you all know, the General Assembly this year passed legislation allowing for the recreational adult use of cannabis. This allows residents of the state of Illinois to purchase up to 30 grams of cannabis. It allows individuals who have medicinal, medical cards to grow up to five plants in their home. It allows non-residents to have up to 15 grams of cannabis. But the most important part is, if you read the part that's highlighted in red, is the flexibility that counties have to regulate cannabis operations in the state, including the hours of operation, the number of dispensaries within the jurisdiction, space between businesses, the size of various operations. And municipalities obviously have the ability to, and counties have the ability to opt out of the program. You already...
Yeah, I was going to ask about that because it doesn't say that. It says "municipal..." Have the ability to opt out, but it doesn't say counties have the ability to opt out. So, is it both?
That's a good question. I don't, I'll have to check that out for you. I don't know.
And then it says we can set the number of dispensaries. Potentially, we could set it at zero if we wanted to for the time being without opting out, I would assume.
Right now, they're, I have to tell you, right now, they're in the process of formulating all the rules and whatnot, so we haven't even seen the draft rules yet. The legislation and the law takes effect January 1 of next year, but I just don't see how they're going to have everything ready to go by then. Yes, ma'am?
I just have a question about, it says, "and the size of various operations." Various operations, specifically, what does that mean? It's not the number of operations. What various operations? Would that be distributors and growers? And is that what various means?
I don't think we have any authority for growers.
But I'm just asking for a definition.
Yeah, I don't have the definition of various.
Can you find out?
Sure, sure.
Because to me, I just, it makes me question, what does that really mean?
Yeah, I mean, this is all just broad overview of the act. We provided, we can provide more detail memo that we have on the program that I think could be helpful to the county and...
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
So, the next page deals with, the next slide deals with the amount of, that you can tax. So, as you can see, it gives counties the authority to impose a tax upon individuals' businesses selling cannabis. The original bill that passed allowed counties in unincorporated areas to tax up to 3.75%. There was a trailer bill that was passed and is awaiting the governor's signature because there was a provision in the original bill that allowed home rule units, home rule counties, which means Cook County, the ability to tax within municipalities. So, right now, the existing law as passed and signed by the governor only allows us to tax in the unincorporated areas. The trailer bill that passed in both chambers allows us, non-home rule counties, to tax the 3.75% in municipalities within the county. So, you can tax the whole county. So, you get, it's just not in the unincorporated areas. It evens the playing field. So, that was significant to us here. So, I know that you have some grow operations here in the county already, correct? Yeah?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, this is going to be a significant amount of revenue when this goes live, so it's something, you know, obviously, we'll provide more information to the county board and to the state's attorney's office as you navigate your way through the law and the new rules that are going to be proposed. So, the next slide deals with the gaming expansion. And obviously, this is a bill that has impact on the vertical construction portion of the state capital program because it's one of the funding sources. A lot of people thought that this would never happen, but it did. So, Illinois is going to have six new casinos, including one in Chicago. It increases the number of positions at the existing casinos from 1,200 to 2,000. There will be a new racino built in Cook County. The number of video gaming terminals increases from five to six in those licensed areas. The bet doubles from $200 to $400. And the tax increases for those VGTs as well. It goes from 30% to 33%, which is already in effect, and come January 1, it goes to Full implementation of the gaming expansion is expected to raise $2.7 billion in one-time revenues and $470 million in reoccurring annual revenues. Again, this is, some of this is a work in progress because they're just in the process. They haven't fully implemented the changes for the video gaming terminals. Obviously, the licenses for the various locations that will be issued, that will take time. So, it will, it'll be a while before we realize all of the new revenue.
So, the sports? I think we did...
Yeah. Yeah, the sports betting pass, but it, there's limitations on that. That won't be fully operational for 18 months, but it starts at the existing casinos, racetracks, and it's limited, but then it goes full-blown in 18 months. So, I'm going to turn it over to Brent to start the portion of the rebuild Illinois.
This is Mexico. Yeah. No, this on the side. Okay. I'm technically challenged, so this might be interesting. Thank you for having us today. The rebuilt capital program, which pretty much of all you are aware of or heard about it and whatnot, is a $45 billion program that basically is made up of horizontal, which is the roads, and bridges, and waterways, and mass transit. And then also, the vertical is anything above ground, which can be included with parks, recreation, municipal, government buildings, you name it, they have it within the vertical. It can be, it's a pretty broad-based spectrum of what fits into vertical. Now, as you remember, a couple of years back, we had a lockbox amendment on the ballot. All the money that's raised for the horizontal stays within the horizontal. So, it used to be a case in Springfield where you could occasionally sweep funds or take money from the gas tax or sales tax on gas and license fees and whatnot, and put it into the budget for other programs. The lockbox means that everything raised for the, basically, the horizontal will stay in that place and will go to road improvements. So, it's a substantial amount of money that's going to be, not only will it be partially bonded, as you can see, and there will be a pay-as-you-go, and the gas tax that was passed that the state is subject to indexing on inflation. So, that automatically, you'll see, depending on the year, some potential increases in the gas tax. The vertical part of the bill is basically gaming, which Julie touched upon, cigarette tax increase, a statewide parking tax, trade-in property exemption, and sale tax parity. These kind of make up the funding for the vertical part of the bill. Now, the kind of, the horizontal one is much easier. It's a gas tax. It's already been implied. That's going to flow pretty rapidly into the coffers. That will be distributed. Money will be their iDOT, and Anne, I'm sure, is going to touch on this. Basically, is working on their six-year road program and adjusting, whereas they have more money to spend. So, they're working on that now. We probably won't see something. But on the vertical, you're going to start seeing, it's going to take a while before you see the total fruits of the vertical. The cigarette tax, obviously, is going to be quick. Statewide parking tax, those things will happen fairly quickly. The gaming expansion, which is a big chunk of the money, is probably going to take a little bit longer to build the casinos for expansion of existing casinos if they so desire and whatnot. So, that money will probably not be automatically, so anything that's tied to vertical, it might not, when people start questioning, when can we see the money? Those things are going to be up in the air for a little bit. As Julie was talking about, most of these things have to go through a rule-making program, through JCAR, so they can adopt emergency rules to try to get it going faster, but they still have to go through the ruling program, the rule-making process. So, you're going to see some of that basically take a while to get it. The horizontal, in the other case, as you know, the county has been given the authority to impose their own motor fuel tax, and that's also subject to indexing. So, if you choose to do that opportunity, you have that available to you. Going forward, I think on page, actually, on page 12, if you want a breakdown of all the revenues, I think if you look at page 12, I think we might have mislabeled that on, in the, it was set on eight, but if you went to 12, you'd find all the breakdown of the amount of money that's being produced by all the different revenues. And then, we tried to list the Will County capital projects. As you can see, Will County, you know, with the, some of the major road improvements and some of the flooding issues that are encompassing, and some, there's a lot of money that went to the county in general. And I think we went through this and tried to identify monies that are impacting the municipalities also within the slide. Is there any questions on any of this? Why I got that up there? Obviously, some of these cities are not totally all within, basically, Will County, but they do touch a proportion of Will County. And so, we just kind of listed the type of funding that was earmarked in the, basically, the capital bill, that were identified in the capital bill. Now, also reflecting upon that, there's also a lot of money that wasn't identified in the capital bill, which are in like lump sum categories. So, there will be some other discussion going forward about some additional funding for different things. So, if, you know, you don't see something on here, that doesn't necessarily mean there's not an opportunity in the future to basically look at some other funding. Nobody knows how this is going to be, you know, how this is going to work out. They're still working those details out. And basically, that's about it. I mean, I think the capital bill has been discussed. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can try to answer if anybody has questions. Yes?
How do you tax the 6%? Does that mean that, for example, in Naperville, they have their parking, a resident buys a parking pass from the city, and will they have to pay an additional 6%?
There's been some ongoing discussion. I've seen some feedback back and forth about municipal-owned parking lots if they're subject, Julie, have you?
Yes.
Yeah.
They will be.
There'll be.
Yes.
So...
Is that...
Yeah.
Parking meters just in general? Yeah. Like the parking meters...
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
There has been some pushback from the municipalities on their own parking garages and that, like for the city of Gillette, I think, I don't even know what they charge per day, but it's only, it's not a lot. So, there, I...
I don't know how you charge a park owner, but I think it has more to do with parking, you know, daily parking, monthly parking passes.
I was just thinking about, like, even in Chicago, the meters aren't owned by the city anymore, but, you know, you put a credit card in there. I don't know if there's sales tax involved. I have no clue. I don't pay attention. I get the little receipt and I plop it on my window, or I punch in my license plate number, you know.
We can double-check, Jackie, but I'm wrong.
Again, some of this, some of this will be worked out in the rule-making process, and there'll probably be some additional requirements for some additional legislation to fix potential problems that might have popped up from this. So...
When does that committee start meeting? Is that in April, the rulemaking?
JCAR.
Oh, they meet once a month. They meet once a month. And everything has, they, they can adopt, any agency can adopt emergency rules related to the legislation. JCAR can either accept their emergency rules, or they can deny their emergency rules too by the agencies. So, they're going to be very busy in the next six months. Like Julie said, I'm not sure if all this is going to be sorted out by the deadlines that people are thinking about, but, did you want me to back up there?
No.
Okay.
Gloria, you had a question?
I had a question concerning existing casinos. Will they have any ability to either relocate, move, or do they have to stay in their existing locations? Anything in the bill specific to the existing casinos?
I don't think they have the ability to move unless they, if they, because Gillette, back in the day, was granted two casinos, and that was by statute. I don't think they would have to go to the General Assembly to request a movement. Like, I just think that happened in Indiana.
It happened in the Capitol Hill in East Bore.
East Bore, yeah. They moved the boat in the bill, so I think it would require legislation.
Okay.
Now, the locals have to depend. They can increase their slots, but they'll do that based on market conditions and competition and whatnot. They can move their slots and have more, but with what's happening with video poker and whatnot, I doubt if you'll see a lot of local gaming expansion within the existing casinos.
Well, that's why I didn't know if maybe one would try to move to make it better invitations. That's why I didn't know if they had that ability in the bill at all.
Yeah, there will probably be some movement or some suggestions.
You'll probably see those, some with the six new licenses, you'll see some of the existing casino owners that are in the state vie for those licenses as well. You know, they branched out into the video gaming terminals to...
Sports betting.
Sports betting. I mean, they're going to have a whole shebang, so...
Jackie?
The next two charts, I don't know if you're going to cover those or not, and boy, is the print small. But in particular, the vehicle registration fee, I thought, yeah, the fee was going to increase by $50, but then there's, it says something over on the right, and it says $475. And that just kind of jolted me. And I can't read the text. Jim, you got the magnifier over there? What's it say?
I have it.
It's the page after this.
That's the amount of money, $475 million is the amount of money they project are going to get from that increase.
So, they're moving our vehicle registration fee from 101 to 475?
No, 475 is the revenue.
That's the revenue.
Oh, that's the revenue. Okay. And they're missing some zeros. I'm, okay.
You probably can't read it.
You can't.
It says revenue, and then in parentheses, success.
It says in millions? Okay, yeah, I can't read it. I mean, maybe if it was a little bigger, but...
It's on the iPad as well, if you want to blow it up on your iPad, too.
Oh, I was just looking at the paper. Okay.
Other questions?
So, is this all starting to implement on January 1 of 2020? Or is it rolling out now?
It's effective, it was the bill when he signed it was effective immediately. The issue is, is that, and we put this slide up there, is because we have, it's been 10 years since we passed a capital program, major capital program in Illinois. The, when Anne talks about the horizontal, that's a little bit different because that portion of the capital program is based on more annual fees and gas tax and existing revenue streams that, where the fees were increased. So, the vertical construction is based on, you know, Brent already talked about that. That's based on gaming, that's based on parking garage tax, you know, trade-in on your vehicles, cigarette tax, and then the sales tax parity. So, some of that, because they're new components, they're going to take a little bit longer to implement, so we won't get the revenue in. So, first of all, they've got to finish, because they put together the program so late in the session, that not all the projects are identified. So, if you take a really good, close look at the state capital bill for the vertical construction, there are a lot of, there are a lot of lines where it says $2.8 million for, you know, it might be school construction, something, something, you know, they're all real vague or broad, and those are probably going to be, that's probably being allocated for specific members. So, legislators are going to have pots of money that they'll be able to provide grants in their legislative districts, and then their larger pots of money that go to agencies like the Illinois EPA, and the Department of Natural Resources, and DCEO, and, you know, it's a variety of different things that that money will be used for. But that's what the legislative leaders are meeting about right now, is how will that money be spent? There's some changes in the Grant Transparency Act that requires these, some of these projects to be line itemed out, so that's what, they'll probably have to address that in the veto session. So, there's still a lot of work to be done, but in terms of the vertical projects, a lot of that money won't be released. I wouldn't expect for the money to be even released, or, you know, they have to take, you have to get grant agreements with the agencies, and then that's, has to have approval from the governor's office, and the governor's office of management budget, and then the legislative caucus, if it involves that. So, it's a process. So, I really wouldn't expect, I mean, I expect that they'll start taking applications so that some of the projects that we identified already can start to receive money, but I doubt that they'll get money till maybe sometime this time next year, because they have to sell bonds, and they have to have the revenue to pay for those bonds.
Do you have a question about a couple of things? So, as far as the motor fuel tax that the county could implement, and then also for the cannabis tax that the county, is there a date you must do it by? Is it open? Can you change it as you go? Do you know those, any of those answers?
I think it's, well, for the, for the county gas tax, that's for the county board to decide. You can decide that this year, you can decide it next year, you can decide it two years from now, whenever... years from now, whenever you're-
No sunset.
Yeah, there's no sunset, and there's no sunset on this. So we like to call it a tool in your toolbox if you, if you decide to use it. For the cannabis, I, I would say that, you know, you already have existing facilities in the county, that it's, it's probably best for the county to consider sooner rather than later, you know, implementing or passing a resolution or ordinance to adopt.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just wanted to know the particulars of that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Jackie?
I'm still kind of unclear on where the money, the revenue sources for vertical versus horizontal come from, and how that may or maybe it doesn't tie into this chart that talks about the motor fuel tax, the vehicle tax, the title fees.
On, on that chart, if you would draw a line- Under, where it says sales tax on motor fuel purchases?
Yes.
If you would draw a line under there, everything below the line is for your vertical construction, and everything above the line is for your horizontal.
Vertical and horizontal. Thank you. And we provided in, in this slide presentation, on page six, specifically for the vertical, it lists the revenue sources.
On page six?
You're out of it now, Brent. It's not going to click, it's not going to work.
I knew I could.
I see it now. I mean, this is just a lot of text to digest. I like the chart, I just needed to know which was which.
Did you see the really go on with this?
Oh, no, I've looked at plenty, Julie.
Other questions? So then, Ann, you're up next.
Okay.
This is the power situation. How do you, what happens?
I have one more question for you guys, I don't know if you know the answer. You know, with all these different tax, which they call revenue sources, they're all taxes on the everyday Joe. I was wondering, is there any movement in Springfield to say, okay, we need to look at where we're at, not continue to spend prolifically on many, many things, and take some of those dollars and, and pay off some of the things, pay off the bills that we owe, make payments to the pension fund that is insanely not funded. Are there, is that, is that a conversation that you hear happening? Because to me, that would make sense. They, they've put these new taxes on, so they have additional revenue. Would make sense to then say, listen, instead of continuing to continue to spend out of control and give, give things away and everything like that, we need to start, take a step, make some payments to pension fund, teachers' pension fund, all those things that are in dire situations, pay our bills down before we continue on as business as usual.
Well, I'll address the part where there's money that's being dedicated from, from bond sales of, I think it's like 1.2 billion dollars that goes for paying the state's backlog of bills. So that's not totally lost in this process. I'm sure our friends in Springfield, I mean, listen, I, this, this transportation, this, this goes to fund some pretty worthy projects that have been needed in the state for a long time. And I know that people can debate whether they're necessary or not, but I think that if you look in Will County, it's a pretty good example of why some of it is very much needed, so.
Oh, no, I, I know that for sure, that the transportation, the infrastructure that we have is all crumbling everywhere that you drive, so I totally understand.
Yeah, and, you know, it's just not that, too. It's, when the vertical part, we, there's a lot of money dedicated for, you know, state facilities, for state parks that have been, you know, left. If you've ever, yeah, if you've driven through, some of those are pretty bad. So a lot of money to the Illinois EPA for, you know, community, you know, treatment, waste treatment facilities, water facilities, and stuff like that. So without those programs, local communities, small communities couldn't even begin to pay for upgrades in their systems or new systems.
Well, it's good to know there's 1.2 billion dedicated to pay down those bills. That's good to hear. Thank you.
I think, and this is just an aside, because I had to do a paper on the state budget, but there is money from the cannabis also set aside for paying down the backlog, so.
I didn't know that part.
Yeah. I'm here to talk about the transportation piece, but what I wanted to do, I'm going to lead into it a little bit. So on the agenda that I've got, I'm going to talk a little bit about how the efforts that you have made in the past in terms of investing and planning have paid off in what projects were actually funded in the capital bill in Will County. And so there's going to be just some quick introductory slides here I'm going to breeze through, but I know that there's some new members that may not know the complete background about the investment that the board had previously made in doing studies that are going to, that have really resulted in some major investments here. So what has been done, I want to start with, you know, the Will County Community Friendly Freight Mobility Plan. This county board voted to make an investment in that plan, and this is just a background slide, I'm not going to read through it, it's in your packet, and I think available for you on your iPads for more information. This study that was done was really instrumental in helping get some of the major investments, particularly for I-80 and for Route 53, funded through the capital bill process. Key findings from that study, again, I'm not going to read through these, but, and it's really there for your reference, but you can see that some of the key findings that we had really, I think, helped influence the decision makers, particularly as IDOT had influence into what projects went in from a statewide perspective into the capital bill. And I think all of these findings that were part of the freight plan really helped us to get there. I'm, I'm going to focus here on the recommendations of the freight plan, because I think you can see, I've, I've put in green where we've done things to address those recommendations. So the plan wasn't just a plan on paper, it was an actionable plan, and, and the county has made significant progress, I believe, in addressing a lot of the issues that were raised through the planning process. I'll talk about the investment priorities, which are specifically tied to the capital bill. But in terms of improving the coordination of oversized overweight truck permitting, we did provide OX cart training and had the state come in and do a seminar on what they were doing, and I know that one more community has signed on with OX cart. We're over 90% of the permits issued in Will County are through an integrated type system, and that's all the jurisdictions. So we made some progress there in terms of expanding data collection and modeling with the focus on freight clusters in the corridors. We did submit a grant for travel demand model. We were not awarded that grant, and I'll talk about that in a second. And then expanding east-west highway connectivity to reduce traffic on local roads. While I, I don't have anything there in green, I know that Eastern Will County has been very engaged in talking about what some potential solutions are there, really to get from 394 over to 57. So there is some movement there. We're, we're working with local officials there to make that happen, and I know both Gloria and, and Judy are heavily involved in those efforts. In terms of, let me go here, the workforce initiatives, that's something I know that John Grueling and his team have been working on with the Workforce Investment Board, and the mobility issue is something that there's a collaboration going on. I'm not directly involved with that, but I think it's between the county, the employers, and PACE. And then developing and communicating a transparent freight network using designated truck routes. So CMAP just issued an RFP and actually have done the interviews and have yet to select a vendor for that project, but they're doing a truck route project here in Will County. I'll show you what the project boundaries are here in a second. And then also, there is, as part of that, there's a piece that is transportation and land use planning. Again, it's focused on a particular study area, but it is expandable to other areas of the county when they get it done. So these are the projects that we had listed when we went around and advocated for the freight plan, and you see a lot of green there. That means that a lot of these things are now funded, or they're moving through the process. And again, I think a lot of that is due to the work we did on the planning side. You can see for yourself what some of those are, you know, we're, I know Humboldt Road is getting very close to beginning construction. Now with the capital bill, we're going to see reconstruction on I-80 in addressing some of those I-80 issues. The Phase 1 update for the Lorenzo Road Interchange is moving forward at IDOT. IDOT has let the I-55 and Weber Road Interchange Reconstruction, and we were lucky enough to get the Route 53 safety improvements, is about a $40 to $50 million program that was funded in the capital bill. In terms, on the planning side of what is being done, we have currently going on the Will County Joliet Intermodal Transportation Master Plan. This is a partnership with the city of Joliet, and with IDOT providing 80% of the funds. The study area you see here, and we are pursuing private sector participation so that we can do some additional engagement activities and add some other elements to the plan that will make the improvement program that comes out of it meaningful to all stakeholders in the area. CDM Smith is the vendor again on that. This is just a background on, if I can get it to go here, this is just a background on what is involved in that master plan process. Part of this, I want to point out, we're developing a study area travel demand model. It's not for the entire county. Again, I'll talk about doing something for the entire county a little bit, a few slides down here. But it's really important for us to understand what traffic looks like right now, so that when we go to develop our program that we're going to use some of these capital dollars that I'm going to talk about here in a bit, you know, that we're putting our dollars in the right place. And again, this is just a status report on where we're at with that particular project. Then we do have the Will County Truck Route Project, and you can see where the study area is there. Again, I think you've got copies of this, so you can read through this more specifically or more closely than me reading through it here on, on the screen. The RFPs were due on July 5, and I know they've had the interviews. And this explains what that truck, or what that truck route studies, what's involved in that truck route study. They're collaborating with 12 to 15 municipalities, and they being CMAP and their vendor. The county was involved in the selection process, and in there, this is going to help develop those connected truck routes and consistent truck routes across the part of the county that's being covered by this. But again, it's going to be expandable to other parts of Will County once that's complete. Then we got a local technical assistance program grant from CMAP through Will County sponsorship. There's no money involved in that, it's just that the county applied for this. And this was to do a transportation and land use study. I've put the RFP email address on here, so you can get more details on what's involved in that. This is just a really high-level view here of what's involved in that study. Again, it's going to be a collaboration with the local governments in and around the intermodal yards and developing land use strategies to guide future development and to maximize the use of current transportation facilities. I want to emphasize that. And then we're going to make sure that all of these studies that are going on right now are coordinated and that we're not having any redundancy, and that we're maximizing efficiency by coordinating.
Judy?
I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm glad that that study is going to do the cluster freight development, look at cluster freight development, because I think that's something we need to look at for sure, is to do more of a cluster area versus just letting everybody go willy-nilly, and then we have transportation problems everywhere that we cannot possibly address. So that'd be something to go forward, and I'm assuming then we're getting buy-in from the local municipalities who usually do the sporadic freight facilities that cause us a lot of grief on our roads.
The goal is to bring in all of the municipalities involved into that process. Right now, CMAP has to make the selection of the vendor. Once they do that, then that part of the process will start, where they'll, they'll have that outreach and start engaging those communities. They know, and I think the county made it clear, that this effort can't be successful unless you have buy-in from those local communities. So that's going to be part of trying to get that process to work right.
Great. And then one more thing I would like to say is, you know, we had our meeting in Eastern Will County on the truck routes, which was fabulous. You provide a lot of information. My mayors are all happy, but I, I found that sometimes some mayors didn't then, or village administrators didn't then tell the rest of the board. So that was a disconnect, so I'd be seeing some of them like, oh, I had no idea about this. I would like to see us put something in place that not only do we tell the village administrator and the mayor, but also provide some information to the trustees, should that be a problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
Joe?
Ann?
Yes, Joe.
Thank you. Reading over this Will County Joliet Intermodal Transportation Master Plan, I know I've brought this up before. I'm, I'm okay with the I-55 to Route 52, but I, I feel like we're missing out north to south from I-80, only going down to Hoff Road. I had suggested, and I wanted to say that I did see some paperwork that says they were going to go all the way down to Piattone Road in Wilmington.
Yeah, they're going, they're going down to, to that.
So is that, is that, I just wanted to be clear, is that a misprint on this sheet by, by chance?
It, it was what we included in the scope, but when we negotiated it, 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 it goes down to Piattone Road.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, we did put in a grant application with IDOT to do a county-wide travel demand model, and you see what the benefits of, or the importance of a county-wide travel demand model are. They're not cheap, they are expensive. I will say there are a number of counties that are a lot smaller than Will County in other parts of the state that have done their own county-wide travel demand model, and I think it's been beneficial for them. They've been able to direct their investments in a way where they're managing current assets to their peak, and it makes them more competitive in terms of, when they go in for grant funding at both USDOT and when IDOT does any kind of competitive freight grants, or any kind of competitive grant funding. So I think, I just wanted to put that up there to make you understand that that's something the county may want to consider on its own. I know it's expensive, but given the resources that are going to be coming in, starting this month from the capital bill, I think it, it would be an investment you should strongly consider. Now that segues ways into the capital bill, financial impacts for the county. So you've got the information on, on the different revenues that are supporting the spending that's related to the capital bill. This is just a reiteration of what Julie and Brent went through. So Senate Bill 1939 was the bill that contained the revenue package for the horizontal construction, and that's where the motor fuel tax was increased by 19 cents a gallon. There was also an increase in diesel above and beyond the added 19 cents. Of that 19 cent increase, 80% is dedicated to highway purposes, with 60% of the 80% going to the state to address roads on the state system. And then 40% of that 80% is going to local governments. And really, essentially what that is, is they're increasing the motor fuel tax distribution to local governments by about 68%. And for Will County, that's about $6.2 million a year more ongoing from this point forward. And, and again, that's an estimate, and it's based on the consumption. And again, that's an estimate, and it's based on the consumption of motor fuel. But if consumption is the same as it was in 2018, or near what it is in 2018, the county can expect an additional $6.2 million on top of the $9.1 that they received in 2018 from those monthly, that's the annual amount, but you get that spread out over the 12 months based on the prior month's sales. So, that's a significant increase that the county is going to realize from the motor fuel tax. That, the entire motor fuel tax, so 19 cents existing plus the new 19 cents, the 38 cents, that will be adjusted annually for inflation. And I will note that under the, what's the right word for the four cents, 48 cents? Optional, thank you. The optional tax that you can implement at your discretion, that would also be adjusted for inflation on an annual basis, based on the rate that you set. I want to go back here. I want to highlight that 20% of the 19 cents per gallon is going for mass transit and rail projects. 90% is going to the RTA, for the RTA and the three service boards that the RTA is the umbrella organization for. And then, 10% is going for downstate transit. And I did want to tell you that, I don't have a breakout in this presentation, but I can tell you that the capital bill contained $558 million, new dollars for airports. Much of that is through the Airport Improvement Program. There is a line item in the appropriations for the capital bill of $6 million for Lewis University to get an air traffic control tower. The highway share is about $26.3 billion. They created a new program for ports and river terminals that is $150 million. IDOT is designing that program right now. That will be a competitive grant program. It can help support river traffic and river movement of goods. The rail portion is about $1.5 billion. A lot of that is for CREATE and for intercity passenger rail service. The line that runs from Chicago to Carbondale gets $100 million more for maintenance and improvements. So, that could potentially impact that particular rail corridor running through Eastern Will. And then, public transit got just under $4.7 billion in the program.
Jackie, do you have a question?
I do, actually. I have two questions. One, it says adjusted for inflation. What figure are they going to use?
Consumer Price Index.
Okay, all right. And, yeah, I just always wonder if that's really where they, how accurate that is, because I'm not sure what they're really measuring there.
Yeah, well, they, in the legislation, they refer directly to the Consumer Price Index as published by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, I think it is, or Economic Analysis.
Did you have a second question?
And then, the other thing, the airport, the Piattone Airport, I understand, like, I don't believe there was anything legislative that happened, other than the change in the leased property tax collection. I'm, when I was in Clark County, I learned that they are building a new airport 40 miles away from the strip, and that that airport will be used exclusively for international travel, and that only domestic travel will come through the current airport. Now, I learned this from an Uber driver, or no, yeah, an Uber driver. So, I don't know how real that is, but I thought it was a pretty novel idea, you know, to have all the international people come through at one place. But I was just wondering, for the Legislative Committee, or maybe there's something for Denise for the committee of the whole, we have a lot of new board members. It's been a long time since we've had a presentation from anybody about the airport. I think it might be nice to have somebody in to talk to us about the whole history of how it got started, what it's supposed to be, what it's supposed to cost, what all has transpired over the years. So, that was my comment, or request.
Thank you. Julie?
Jackie brings up a good point. I think it would be beneficial for us who are new on the board to understand what are the, what is the objective and the purpose of the new airport. I know out there on the forest preserve tour in that particular area, all I could do was reflect on how that airport is going to forever change the landscape out there, and the residents are going to lose their beautiful skies and, you know, because you're bringing in light pollution and all of this. So, it's going to be a dramatic change in the landscape out there and the way of life. So, that would be very helpful to understand what, why was it proposed, what's driving this project?
Yeah, that's, that would be some other people.
Yeah. Have you had a second question? Wait a minute, Jackie.
Well, it's not, it's not in the capital bill.
And then, the other thing, with the transit, the dollars that we've received, did they use the ridership numbers and that type of data to determine how much these projects received?
So, in terms of the 90-10 split between the RTA and downstate, that's the traditional split. Whenever a capital bill is passed, and it includes transportation and a transit portion for transportation, it's always been a 90-10 split. So, that's just more of a traditional split. And that's tied to the road program. There was a traditional split of 55% for districts for downstate outside of the Cook and the Coller Counties, and then Cook and the Coller got 45%. So, then, they wanted to flip that distribution because Cook and the Collers is so intensely dependent on transit as part of the way to relieve congestion and to move people. So, that's just from a legislative perspective, something they've traditionally done.
But that, is that reevaluated? Because, for example, one year in the city over by 22nd and Cermak, that's all being regenterified and built up, and you're seeing less and less transportation there. So, if the city is, if that's diminishing, then shouldn't our percentage increase?
That would be the RTA. So, the RTA splits it amongst the three service boards. So, you've got the CTA, which is obviously Chicago, and then you've got Pace and Metro, which is more suburban. So, the RTA is the umbrella organization for all three of those transit providers. And so, they make those allocation decisions. And then, they also have their own process for vetting projects and putting projects into program. So, they produce their own multi-year program, so to speak, that addresses transit-specific.
But it also appeared to me that freight, is there a possibility that their freight traffic is decreasing because you're seeing more and more of those areas in Chicago being developed into residential and?
I think you see it moving around. And I don't want to speak, because I'm not an expert on Cook County. They just did their own freight study, but I think that they still have significant pockets where that's occurring.
Judy?
So, since a couple of members brought up the airport, I thought I would mention a couple of things myself. Recently, just wanted to, I was interviewed yesterday for a story that'll be in the Tribune coming out Monday. But more importantly, if you want to have more information, you could attend, there's going to be a screening of a documentary called "The Field: A Fight or Flight Story." It screens at the Gene Siskel Film Center at 164 North State Street at noon. This Saturday, the doors open at 11:30. It's open to the public, but they ask that you register in advance at Eventbrite. So, if you go to the field preview at Eventbrite.com, you can pre-register. That gives a lot of information, tells both sides of the story, since the documentary began back in 2002.
Can you give me a DVD? That's Taste of Bolingbrook, honey.
I cannot get you a DVD. There isn't one, but I thought I'd share that with everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
This is, again, going back to that Senate Bill 1939. It spells out in a little bit more detail in terms of the vehicle fees. The registration fee, they did add $100 on top of the regular registration fee for electric vehicles, recognizing that electric vehicles don't pay a motor fuel tax. And that's an effort to capture their use of the system that the motor fuel taxpayers are paying for. They did increase the regular registration fee, $50 a year per vehicle. All of these fees are considered motor vehicle and operator license fees. They go into funding that does not get distributed to local governments. So, all of the fees generated here would be going into the state system. One thing that I would like to point out is that, as part of this, they repealed the commercial distribution fee for trucks. That was enacted way back in around 2000, 2001. And those funds were deposited into the general revenue fund. And it was one that always gave, I know trucking firms, a lot of heartache because it was a significant fee. Anyway, so they repealed that fee. And then, as part of the revenue bill package, they did establish a $50 million per year transportation enhancement program that will be administered by IDOT and for this region, CMAP. And those are some of your alternative transportation projects, biking, some of the multi-use trails, things like that. So, they did establish an ongoing annual program. It'll be on a biannual basis, so every two years, there'll be $100 million. And CMAP will get a portion of that, and they will put out a call for projects. That's just to make you aware that if there are projects in Will County that are important, that should be prioritized, that were part of your bike plan, that would be an avenue to try to seek some funding.
Jackie?
Question about the electric vehicle registration fee. Is that for any vehicle with any portion?
No, all electric.
Okay, so, I drive a Chevy Bolt. I put gas in it every couple of weeks.
No, it's not going to impact you.
But I do use electric for part of my driving.
Yeah, no, it's all electric.
100% electric?
Yeah, so like the Teslas and other vehicles that you plug in.
Yeah, Chevy Bolt. Back on that other slide where you did the decrease in the commercial truck whatever, whatever, that was going into the general fund, is that why they increased the registration fee for the truck? Was that supposed to kind of be a wash? I don't know how much the commercial distribution fee was.
It was, it's a very complicated formula. That's why I didn't put it on here.
Yeah. I just know that like Route 53, where it turns from Romeoville heading toward a Bolingbrook, I mean, I've seen the ruts in the road, at least this deep, and that's not caused by a regular vehicle.
No, you're right. So, they increased the truck fees a little bit more than the $100 per year more. They also added the, there's an added tax on diesel on top of the 19 cents. And I think it went up an additional 5 cents a gallon. So, right now, diesel, the original surcharge for diesel was 2 and 1/2 cents. It went from 2 and 1/2 cents to 7 and 1/2 cents. That is partially in recognition of the fact that heavy vehicles have a bigger impact on our system. So, these are specific to Will County, these impacts. There will be, as I mentioned, that 68% increase in your annual distribution. Jeff, I know, is going to have projects ready and available to spend that money on. There is also included in the capital bill, there was $1.5 billion in bonding for local grants, and that money will be distributed via the motor fuel tax distribution formula. And as a result of that, local governments, the county municipalities and townships are all going to get roughly about 2 and 1/2 times their annual distribution in this one-time grant. They have not yet determined whether that grant will be spread over three years or over five years. But that is additional funds that are coming into those local jurisdictions. I also want to point out, back on the, on the motor fuel tax distribution, the monthly increases, your municipalities and your townships are also getting a 68% increase in their funding. So, there are going to be new funds available immediately for any kind of local system problems that might be needing addressed. Also, the capital bill, there was a line item in the capital bill of $848 million for I-80. That is on top of what was already in IDOT's multi-year program. So, the total for I-80 is $1.1 billion. And what that does is that covers IDOT's planned improvements from US Route 30 to Ridge Road just over the Grundy County line. And that includes the reconstruction of the Displanes River bridges and those interchanges both to the east and west of the bridges. There, we're going, that does not add capacity to I-80, but there will be added auxiliary lanes, which provides more room for exiting and entering the system. And they are finishing their Phase 1 engineering for that project right now. They anticipate to have that done and approved by the Fed, Federal Highway Administration by the end of the year. So, then, they would enter into the design engineering phase. That would begin early next year, as they work through design engineering. That probably can take 18 months to two years. At that point, they would be ready to start letting construction contracts. In the meantime, there are some short-term improvements that IDOT is working on on I-80. So, you are going to see some construction occurring on the interstate. But the bigger project, we're probably looking at two years before that construction actually starts. But the money is there now, whereas previously, there were, there were no dollars identified for those particular projects. Yes?
I thought we figured the bridge at a billion dollars alone for the two bridges.
No, the bridge is $300 million. So, we had, John had his I-80 coalition meeting, and IDOT came and did their presentation. And based on their engineering, the bridges themselves to replace those is $300 million. The entire corridor is $1.1 billion.
Okay, but that includes the extra, extra regular lanes? So, we go to three lanes on that 16?
It will, no, it does not include added lanes. It does not.
What do we figure it would cost to add the additional lanes?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. So, that is something that, I know that there have been conversations with both IDOT and the tollway about. But right now, IDOT just has the funding to take care of the current issues. And by adding those auxiliary lanes, which are just, they're extending the entrance and exit lanes, it just makes the movements on the interstate that much safer, but it doesn't add capacity.
So, that's not moving the bridge? They talked about moving the bridge?
The bridges are not going to be rebuilt in their exact location. I forget if it's to the north or south.
Both, one on north, one on south.
Yeah, so.
So, that does include that?
Yeah, it's just a slight, it's a change in alignment, and it's going to take out that nasty curve to the west of the bridges. So, supposed to. There is $50 million for the Route 53 Safety Improvements, and that's a series of improvements that will extend turn lanes and provide additional signalization. IDOT can give a better presentation on what's included in that. But it is a short-term solution for a long-term problem out there, and that is, I believe, from Doris Avenue. Where's the southern termini? Arsenal, yeah. Thanks, Nick. So, that's in there. There was, yes, Gloria.
Underneath the bridge at all?
No. No, that's, that's a whole Pandora's Box.
That's a different thing.
That's where you have to start talking and negotiating with the railroad, so. There is, that also included as a line item in the capital bill was $162.5 million for a new interchange on I-57 at Eagle Lake Road. And there's still some questions as to what exactly that is. So, I think there are ongoing conversations with folks in Eastern Will County and... So, I think there are ongoing conversations with folks in Eastern Will County and with the legislators involved in that to try to figure out what that is and what kind of flexibility there is in that particular appropriation.
Judy?
Thank you for mentioning that. I know that we did have that discussion. I know that my mayor, some of them, think that anything moving in that direction promotes the airport, and I have several mayors and many, many people in my district that are opposed to the airport. That's been going on since, since long before Joe was born. And I know that, in addition to that, that Eagle Lake Road is actually the wrong name for the road because they did this in the haste at the last minute of the session. So, I'm looking for upgrades on that, and I did just attend a legislative bar meeting with the Farm Bureau, in which case, it would be good to have Senator Pat McGuire come to a meeting if we do have about the airport, because he did mention some things. But they did say that, as far as the airport goes, they weren't thinking about anything moving forward, and they did say that, right, they're looking at taking that $162 million and possibly doing other infrastructure needs that actually are more dire than another interchange. There's a million interchanges along I-57 in that general area, so, thank you.
There will be additional projects that will be outlined in the multi-year program when IDOT puts that multi-year program out. That will include projects that were specified by specific members. So, as we wait to see what is included in that, last time I touched base with folks at IDOT, they thought that that would be by the end of summer, and I asked them to define summer, and they said, "Well, on the calendar, it ends in September." So, we'll see. Don't think I missed anything on the capital bill. I just want to briefly mention that with the added funds that are coming in locally from some of these tax increases, it would make county projects a lot more competitive when we're applying to US DOT for grants. The current administration in Washington is very focused on leveraging more than the current local splits. They would like to see local governments contribute more money towards some of these projects, and also to try to find some private investors in some of these projects. So, I do think it positions us to compete much better for some of these programs. We did, the county did submit an application to the build program. That application was submitted mid-July. They have to announce those award winners in November, per the act passed by Congress that put those in place, that grant program in place. We applied for $12 million for Lero Way between Cedar and Nelson, which includes the reconstruction of the intersection at Cedar. And any dollars that would come in if we were awarded that grant would allow the county DOT to reallocate resources that they have now dedicated to that project to other priority projects in the county. So, if we are successfully, successful in competing for this, I think it will bring added resources to the county and allow the county to address additional transportation challenges. There's going to be another round of the Infra Grant coming up, a billion, 50 million. That will be out before the end of the current federal fiscal year. We have a Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvement Program, so that's for grade separations. And they have to put out a notice of funding opportunity for that one yet. And then, there are other programs. There's accelerated innovation deployment, where the county could compete for up to $3 million if we're implementing a new technology as part of a project. And the Advanced Transportation Congestion Management Technologies Deployment Program. And then through CMAP is the regular, CMAC, and Surface Transportation, and I mentioned the Transportation Enhancement Program. And with that, I will end my portion of the presentation, and I'm sorry I went long.
Okay, any final questions? So, thank you, Anne, Julie, and Brent for being with us today, and give us an update on the capital bill and helping us to understand better what comes to Will County. Anything else? No? Okay, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh.
Public comment.
Before we close out, are there any public comments? Anyone from the public who would like to speak to us today? Anybody in the public? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.